Yeah, I'm just one, I'm wanting to. Both of you guys are just too.
No.
It's, 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 it's so hard to get anything out of these folks. Is it really so?
Very. Well, we're on stocks.
This is gonna be hearing.
All right.
Ready?
Cut.
I am ready.
Get rid of my recorder. Y'all ready? Yeah, it's recording. All right, good evening. Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Centerton City Council meeting order for March twelfth, twenty twenty four. And everyone in attendance, please rise with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please, will you lead us in prayer?
Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful weather. Lord, just be mindful that a little rain every once in a while would be nice. The Lord be with us as we make the decisions of this great city that we call home. And Lord be with those that are not with us today. Keep them in your hands, surround them with love. And in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette. Beth and Cowver is absent. Keith Higginbotham.
Here.
Josie Reed.
Here.
Darren Warren.
Here.
And Misty Elam.
And this is a side note, Misty, she told me she might drop in later to the meeting, however, she will not be participating in the meeting. And we'll discuss it later on item number eleven. All right. So first on the agenda is accepting the city council meeting minutes from February thirteenth. Twenty twenty four, I made a mistake on the agenda, it's twenty twenty four. And they've been in Dropbox for about a week. Anybody have any questions? If not, someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
Not made.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cut.
Any votes? All right, next is acknowledging receipt of the Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from January twenty third. Planning Commission meeting from February sixth and February twentieth. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from February fourth.
Make a motion to acknowledge the minutes.
Accept them. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Shannon is not with us today, she's, she's ill. I'll, I'll go with financial report. And right now we are sixteen point sixty seven percent through the quarter. That's, that's basically our revenue is, it's a little bit under. And I will make a note, and she would have told you the same thing, usually this first, first couple of months, it is a little low, but it all catches back up. Expenditures is eighteen, eighteen percent, but again, we're, we're fine, it's, it's just the first, the first month or two, we have some big bills, we have to pay. Insurance, work comp, different things. So it's like most of the budgets are pretty good, and like you said, it's very early, so they're catching up and on the street fund. Same thing, their, their turn back just takes a little bit more to catch up, but they got almost twelve percent revenue and fifteen percent expenses, but they also asked carrier from last year, so they're, they're in good shape. So does anybody got any questions on the, on the financial report? Here are none, would someone like to make a motion to accept the February financial report for general street fund and also the court report, which is in your Dropbox? You have a motion, we have a second?
Like it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next is department reports. Uh, all the departments have put reports in there and most of them are here, if you have any questions for them. Yeah, you're not hearing any? Next is public comment. Uh, this is the, the time where someone would like to address the council. You'd like to address the council, come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you are limited to three minutes. So I will open up public comment at this time. Anybody for public comment? One, twice, all right, public comment is closed. So next, everybody get some popcorn. A little bit of popcorn and get a drink, make sure, not, this is about two hours long. Two hours. If you give a politician a mic, I'm going, I'm going there, no, just kidding.
Three minutes, man.
Three, wow.
Oh, yes.
It'll be close to three minutes, maybe a little longer.
You say we could go ahead and leave the room?
Yeah, go ahead and leave and come back, I'm recording. So this is something that is required by law. Uh, you know, you see the president, he gives a State of the Union. The governor gives state of the state and all that, so this is the state of the city address. And by law, I have to do it within the first ninety days of the year, so we're, we're within that first ninety days. So, uh, here we go. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council and fellow citizens. As your mayor, I'm honored to report to you the state of the city and its future need. I'm grateful for the opportunity that the citizens have given me, the services of Centerton over the past fourteen years as your mayor. First of all, I am happy to announce that the city of Centerton is financially sound. And through physical conservation. Your staff and city council who are good stewards of taxpayer's money has balanced its budget over the past fourteen years. Twenty twenty three financial statement has been presented. And as you will see, we are in good financial condition. This is the important one, Centerton continues to grow. And we are continuing to see new citizens every year. Our current estimated population is twenty four thousand five hundred and forty-three. Which is up from twenty three thousand one hundred in twenty twenty-three. Which is a six point six or five, six point six five percent increase from last year, according to worldpopulationreview.com. We have also grown thirty five point zero eight percent since the twenty twenty census of seventeen, seven ninety-two. Centerton has grown to thirteen point six square miles and is ranked twentieth largest state, city in the state. Top twenty. As the community grows, we are seeing more commercial projects come to the community. Currently under construction is a new Harps, which will be approximately forty thousand square feet. Uh, other projects are the Centerton Animal Hospital, a new Muesburger Restaurant, a new Chipotle, just to name a few. I would also like to report on a couple of grant projects we are working on. Currently, we are working to construct sidewalks along Gamble Road to Bliss Street, from Seaver Road, and then Bliss Street to D Street. And we acquired the last right of way for this project, and they should go out for bid soon. We are also working on Phase Two of the McKistick Trail, which will eventually connect to the Bentonville Trail System. And finishing up comments from RDOT, and this should go out for bid soon also. We are, we also plan on applying for the next round of TAP and carbon reduction grants for a sidewalk project to connect several existing sidewalks together. And we also received a grant to add a ten-foot sidewalk on Highway one oh two, which is currently out for bid this year. The city is working with RDOT on the expansion of Highway one oh two, West Centerton Boulevard, from Main Street to Highway two seventy-nine South. The project was set to go out for bid in September twenty twenty-three, our plan did show a roundabout near Sunmetal Drive. Which would cause five local businesses to be displaced. That roundabout has been removed from the project. The project, which will include five lanes and a sidewalk on both sides of a roadway. The sidewalk on the south side of the roadway will be ten-foot side path, which the city received a six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant to fund this project. This will also add additional sidewalk in our community. It's page one of thirty. The city is also working with RDOT to widen Main Street, which is State Highway one oh two B. To see if they will widen the road, repair it, and add sidewalks on both sides. The city would possibly take over the road at that point. We are working with RDOT with, on Highway two seventy-nine South, which is also called Vaughn Road. To get this project added to the next round of road improvement listings. I have been in contact, in touch with the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning about getting some of the projects programmed into the next round of improvements. And I'll just make a side note, they are working hard to get several projects here in Northwest Arkansas, not just Centerton, but several cities try to get them programmed in. You know, they realize a lot of the growth is up here in this area, so. All right. Public Works, they've been very busy in twenty twenty-three. A lot of, a lot of road improvements have been made to include patching, overlays, and striping in different areas of the city. Many, many drainage boxes have also been repaired last year, which will help to drainage in the community. The city has received a grant for three hundred thousand dollars to pave Tycoon, Botley, and Dorsey Lee roads. And Public Works has been preparing the road by fixing issues prior to the paving. This will help save the taxpayers additional funding by doing this work in-house. A trail was completed near Grimsley High, Junior High, and flashing lights were also added to slow down traffic during peak times at the school. Parks and Recreation has also been busy in twenty twenty-three by installing a pump track, getting final designs to install BMX Park. Also, a new playground dog park was added to Riverwood, Riverwood Park. And Department has also been utilizing a recently purchased wood chipper, taking care of removing dead trees in the community. Public Works staff has also been working hard together with the fire and police departments to clean up and open the dams at the Centerton Lake. Department has also pledged for new equipment to continue making improvements at the lake, which we will bring back probably next month. Our planning department. Pay attention, Larry. No, our, our, our planning department has been very busy with several projects active at, at any one given time. There are usually twelve to fifteen different subdivisions and several commercial projects are in the phase of development. Department has also been working on updating our codes and is in the middle of reviewing the land use and master street plan. It should be reviewed every five years, but due to growth in this area, it's being, being reviewed earlier. The city had, also had a community rating system, which is also called CRS, which is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community flood payment management practices. That exceed the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, NFPIP. Over fifteen hundred communities participate nationwide. And I am proud to announce, due to the hard work of our staff, we have received a CRS rating of seven. Seven. Which will help homeowners on flood insurance rates. Smart Gov has also came online as assistant in the review process of planning projects. Where developers can actually see the progress of their submittal, and also business license have been added to help automate this process. Page three of thirty. Centerton has seen a huge impact on building in our city. With, with a total of eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine inspections in twenty twenty-three, with almost a total of a million dollars in building permit fees for the year. We have seen a steady increase in twenty twenty-three of many commercial projects coming to the city with many more services and restaurants coming. For twenty twenty-three, we had thirteen hundred and five new permits, also motor permits are now being done along. Along with schedule, which streamlines that process. The Code Enforcement Division has been extremely busy with a large number of grass and other complaints in twenty twenty-three since the officer implemented, has been implemented. He's been very proactive in identifying violators, which keeps the number of complaints down every year. The city has given away over five hundred trees in October, and will receive five hundred more trees thanks to a grant from the Walmart Family Foundation. Which has really enhanced the appearance of the community with another group of trees planned to be given away during Arbor Day. The Centered Police Department recorded twenty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-one total calls for service, which is an increase from twenty twenty-three. The residents recently passed a bond issue to increase the size of the police building, which should start construction this year. The Centerton Fire Department responded to seventeen hundred and sixty calls for service in twenty twenty-three. And attended eleven thousand hours of training, and is currently staffed with full-time firefighters, part-time firefighters. Training continues on a continuous basis. And our, our department actually hosts training here on a regular basis also. The ambulance service is doing well, and we were able to send an ambulance and crew to Florida to help FEMA in twenty twenty-three in a disaster response. Station two remodel is complete and houses a full-time ambulance crew, and the department is in the process of hiring six new firefighters to staff. And provide full-time coverage on the north side of our city and fire area. Centered Water and Sewer Department. Has current, has this last year increased the size of commission to five members. And is working right now to, to build a new water tower at Fire Station Three, which is on the west side of the city, that's under construction. Centered Animal Control has completed the first phase of the remodel project. And has hired an animal services manager in addition to an adoption specialist, and has two animal control officers and two kennel techs. The shelter uses Facebook to post dogs picked up and is a, has a great response from the community, not only reuniting pets, but also adopting them from the shelter. Also, the shelter is featured once a month on KNWA Pet of the Week, and has also been seen on KFSM Channel Five. And the voters recently approved a bond to build a community center in the community, and the process will start to design the building. We are excited for this project and shooting for an opening time of spring of twenty twenty-six. Page thirty. Lastly, I appreciate the opportunity to work with each of you and for the citizens of our community over the past fourteen years. And no administration is complete without the support of the Centerton City Council and a loyal staff of great employees. And our city does have many hardworking employees from the department heads all the way down to the troops that carry out the daily activities. And duties to keep our city running smoothly and efficiently. Thanks for your job well done. And that concludes my state of the city.
I just want to make an acknowledgement, you didn't hear one heckle from the, from the floor. So it kidnapped in the president, so.
Okay, they're wearing their shirts for more years, whatever. Okay. So with that, you don't have any questions on that, do you? Okay. And I'll, 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 I'll make a couple of spelling corrections, I noticed, I'll, I'm gonna send you an update when I, I found a couple of spelling issues. But after I, after I fix it, I'm gonna.
Normally just fix it and attach it.
I'll, I'll, I'm gonna post it on the website, it'll be posted on there tomorrow. So as soon as you can see this too, plus it's being recorded. So.
So you just try to make it look good. I can see, he's taking.
The job description.
Yeah.
He's taking care of us.
I want to check some, make sure I did, I think I did. I see my name up there. Yeah. I just, I'm sitting there thinking, did I? Getting old. I had to reread it again. They want to hear it again, right? It was exciting. It was exciting news.
No, because now you might get some heckling.
I'm heckling because I didn't get the recording. Okay. So let me get down where I need to be. All right, so next, uh, we do have ordinances coming up. But before we start, would someone like to make a motion to read Orders twenty twenty-four dash zero six, zero nine, ten, and eleven by title only?
Not made.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sure.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Darren Warren.
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, also, would someone like to make a motion to suspend a rule requiring us to read on three separate occasions? Orders twenty twenty-four dash zero six, zero nine, ten, and eleven.
Not made.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Like it.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sure.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Darren Warren.
Yes.
Hang on a minute. Okay. All right, so this first ordinance, and, and I have Kraft and Toll here, young man, if you have any questions. Uh, this first ordinance is, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six. Uh, this is accepting the final plat of Maple Estates Phase Three. Uh, this is located, uh, just west of the high school. Uh, and there's two other phases there, this is for fifty-six lots. Also, uh. Uh, they have provided bonds, water and sewer bonds for three hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-five. Twenty-five, you know, twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, street bond for three hundred and eight thousand three eighty-seven thirty-eight. And range at two hundred and fourteen thousand two fifty-seven and ninety cents. Uh, also, they have dedicated right of way on, uh, on the east side of Wolverine Drive as part of this. And, um, this was heard at the Planning Commission meeting at February twentieth meeting, and they did recommend approval to the city council. Any questions? Counselor?
See if Seren's in ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash zero six. And ordinance accepting the final plan of the Maple Estates, uh, Phase Three subdivision created residential lodge one twenty through one seventy-five. In the city of Centerton, section twenty-nine, township twenty, uh, range thirty-one west, I'm sorry, I don't know where the west came from, range thirty-one, uh, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six?
Not made.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sure.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Darren Warren.
Yes.
Okay. This next one is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. Uh, this is a rezone of the Kraus revocable trust property. This is just, uh, one acre, one point seven nine acres, sorry. This is, this became as of a track split. Uh, this is located at seventeen fifty-five West Centerton Boulevard. And they're asking to rezone this one point seven nine acres to low-density residential. Which is consistent with what's on the property, there is actually a home on the property right now, so it'll make it consistent with the zoning. Uh, I'm not sure what they're gonna do with the rest of it, but, um, it was heard at the Planning Commission, and they did recommend approval, it was at the, uh. February twentieth meeting also. And like I said, it's low-density residential.
So I just have a question on this one. So land use plan, it's surrounded by business park and then commercial on the other side? That's just gonna be one acre with a house on it and surrounded by.
Surrounded by commercial and agriculture. Agriculture to the south of it.
I see business park.
No, where the green, where the green is, this is south, that's, that's agriculture.
You're looking at the land use plan?
I got it up here on the screen for you.
That's gonna be what they're trying to zone to, not the land use, the whole reason is if it stays as agricultural. Um, the minimum size requirement for any agricultural park sold is five acres, so it's non-conforming now. So they just want rezoned it when they did a line adjustment for that, so it actually conforms with the rules now, so it's at the minimum of one acre size. It's stated ag, it's a non-conforming use, so that was the purpose why they rezoned it. Just so it can, what they have there now meets our codes.
Yeah, I get that, I'm just looking at proposed business park around it, and then commercial on the other side?
Yeah, the commercial, that's the gas station right next to it. Um, so I mean, the intent, the whole area wouldn't have, uh, there in Boulevard being what it is, is to be more commercial on the road frontages. But there, that's the existing house, so unless they want to demo the whole house. So it's just more so bring it into conformance of what's actually there when it's under the five acres.
Thank you. Any more questions? Counselor?
Save Seren's in ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash zero nine, an ordinance to rezone certain lands within the Centerton City limits. Belonging to Larry Martin Kraus Revocable Trust and the Kraus Family Revocable Trust, Larry Kraus trustee. From agricultural A one to low-density single family R one.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine.
Second time it does it, I can't.
Siri, you wanna ask me that motion? Siri, swear Siri. All right, so I can make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine.
Not made.
Have we got a motion, we have a second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette. Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sure.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Darren Warren.
Yeah.
All right, our next ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten. Uh, this is just amending the twenty twenty-three budget. It's not changing anything, we're just making everything balance out, because we had a lot, a lot of zeros in here and a lot of things that weren't, we went through and. I changed it and cleaned it all up, so we get the opportunity to do this, but we also have to make a budget at the end of the year. Or put the expenses in there for each one of our funds, we have a nine eighty-eight, eight thirty-three, all those supplemental funds have to be in there, so.
This last meeting?
No, you, no, not this, this is the last year's budget.
Oh, last year's budget, last year.
Yeah, this meant last year, we get to do that.
Okay.
So that, that, and we do this, we do this every year. Like I said, we're also adding all those extra, you know, funds, because we have like fifteen different funds out there, we have to account for them all. So, and they, they're in the Dropbox, they've been there for a little while, so.
Mine doesn't work for some reason.
Any questions?
We had ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash one zero, an ordinance amending the budget for the operation of the city of Centerton, Arkansas. For the calendar year two thousand twenty-three, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten.
So moved.
Here we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sure.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Darren Warren.
Yes.
All right, uh, section three, the city council of the city of Centerton, Arkansas has determined that an emergency is hereby found to exist. And this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Not made.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Sure.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Darren Warren.
Yes.
Okay, this last ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven. Uh, this is accepting warranty deed, basically we're accepting right of way from, uh, from Canarc. Which is the, also developer of Maple Estates, this is on Wolverine Drive on the east side. West side, okay, we talked earlier, okay, this is on the west side, this will just, as we widen, they'll give us more right of way so we can, you know, widen the road at some point, so. And, and they're just donating to the city. Any questions?
All right, the city of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash one one. And ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas to accept the warranty deed. For property located in a part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section twenty-nine, Township Twenty North. Range thirty-one west, Benton County, Arkansas, by Canarc Diamond Realty Centerton LLC.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven?
Not made.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette.
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham.
Yes, sure.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Darren Warren.
Yes.
Okay, so this next. Item, uh, and these were requested by, by Chief Harper and also by, uh, Anthony. And also, uh, HR was involved, because we, sometimes we have people apply for jobs and they get confused what we're doing. So I was just gonna do all these at once, you know, they both wrote memo's to you. Me, which I'm presenting to you. So I will say, on these, we already have job descriptions, the job descriptions will be the same as what's already approved, we're just, you know, changing the title, pay, and everything stays the same. The first one, uh, is, I, I believe they want to get away from the animal, Centerton Animal Control. And make it more centered in animal services, which is more consistent with, you know, our neighborhood city, which, and so the first one, the manager. The shelter manager, which that's how it's listed in the budget, we'd like to change that to a animal services manager. And we have hired somebody for the position. Uh, and then that'll be better aligned, you know, like the chief says, to, uh, for that job description. Also, the animal servant, animal shelter clerk. Uh, we'd like to, or he would like to change that to an adoption specialist, still the same exact job, it's just wanted to change the title. And then on Public Works, this is where we get a little confusion. Because right now we have a street maintenance technician and a parks maintenance technician, they think they're coming in working on equipment. No, and, and that's, that's what they, they think, that's what they're doing, and basically we would just take the word. Maintenance, I just call it street technician and a park technician, right? That's what you have in there. And we're done, okay, just to make it easier, because we do get a lot of questions when, when they come through the hiring process.
Streets, right?
Yeah, work on the streets, not ma, yeah, I did, part of it is maintenance, and this is, yeah. And we just had to change it just to make it match with the budget, so the job description stays the same, pay stays the same, so. Was anybody got any questions? I got both, you know, Chief Harper and Chief Martinez here, if we need them. Okay. Not, would someone like to make a motion to approve these title changes?
So. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, next, or last that I have is, uh, I have been in contact with Councilmember Misty Elam. Uh, she has relocated out of the area. Her husband received a new position and they moved out of state. And they've sold their house, they no longer live here, which means she, you know, she has resigned her position effective immediately. And they've sold their house, they no longer live here, which means she, you know, she has resigned her position effective immediately. So what we need to do, but let me explain something a bit more before we do this. Uh, we will need to accept her resignation and then declare a vacancy for the position. Okay, and in state law, which is right here. I'll put that in there just so everybody has it, so we're all on the same sheet of music. Since our population is under twenty thousand by the census, not by what I read, but by the official census. The city council gets to appoint someone. And you have to appoint someone, ideally, as long as you have a quorum, by the next council meeting. Uh, what we've done in the past, which seemed to work great, this gives everybody an opportunity who would like to apply for this position. Is we can, I already have application made up like we've done in the past. Put the application out online. Anybody who's a registered voter residing in ward one, uh, can apply for this position. And then it would be up to you, we, we in the past have interviewed folks. Uh, they've come up here, the council's interviewed them, then we've went back to executive session, talked about it and y'all pick someone. So, uh, and, and that's, if, if it was, if it was over twenty thousand, then we did have a special, but we're under the census. Under twenty thousand, census wise, so.
Is there a, I don't think I read anything in here on how long they have had to live in the city in that ward?
Nope. No. Nope, they can register to vote today and, no, seriously, they could vote today and we've seen that happen. No, 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 not here.
What's our census again?
Uh, our official census is seventeen seven ninety two. That's a twenty twenty census. Three ninety north B. Okay, um, anyway. But our, so that puts us under twenty thousand. Cause I asked this question before. I think we had something come up a year or two ago and.
Justin was our, at first.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the first one. And I think the others have been appointed to it. And, you know, that's, that's the way it goes. But I do wanna say, you know, this, this is, I think this is a good solid process. I've had a citizen reach out to me. You know, ask a lot of questions and this is what we've done in the past and it seems to work well. Where anybody in here, she can come down here. You know, they have, and I put a deadline of April first. And that would be the Monday before the council meet, it was the, of the, you know, council meeting's on the ninth. I want to do April first. Because then I have to verify with the clerk to make sure they are registered and they live in ward one. And anybody that's interested, they can go to voterview.org and they can see what ward they're in. Cause it'll get a little confusing on some of these areas. So, you know, you can look right there. And I thought I was in ward two, but I looked and I'm in ward three, so. So.
To be in ward.
I used to be in ward two. We used to serve together on ward two, but irregardless, so I think that's the best process to do. Now where anybody wants to apply.
And so how, how we did it last time, I was like, oh, it's better than on the council, but we, you know, we done basically the.
Yeah, we brought, we brought them up here.
You did get resumes?
Yeah, we had resumes.
Well, I got, I got official application and they wanted to give resumes. What I'll do, I'll open up a folder in Dropbox for the council. And anything I receive, I'll drop in that Dropbox. They were, you all can review them before, you know, they come down here. What I did last time is I did actually turn the meeting over to Keith, since the council's the one decides. And he, he conducted, or I just conducted, we, you know, well, they're here and you have questions. I think that's the most fair way, anyway, anybody's interest. We don't miss anybody and they've got, what, three weeks to apply?
Yeah, that's not Justin.
Yeah, I think we had five people fly when he came. Was it five? There was five of them.
Yeah, I thought there was more than me. Seems like a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Well, why can't we talk to each one of them?
Yeah.
And Bill?
I will do that at the end of the meeting.
If I'm not mistaken, and I'll look between now and then, I think because this is the, uh, it's a council member, it's not staff, and I, I don't think you guys can go to executive session. I think what you guys have done in the past is asked the applicants to step out.
They won't go to executive session, they can go without the applicant.
I, I, I'm not, I, I think we may have asked them to, to step out last time. I don't know that we can. I'll look into it.
That's, that's what they've done in the past. They went back and deliberated.
I think you asked.
Without the applicants.
Yeah, without the applicants.
Yeah, they, they have.
Well, what we did last time is we didn't go like into the conference room. We just.
We excused them, didn't you?
We just went in, right out of, outside of the chambers and talked.
Anyway.
That's what we did last time. I don't know if we called it executive session that we stopped.
We were in this room the last time.
No, no, we, we asked the applicants to go outside. I can reach out to Mr. Lee and ask him, you know, or you can.
I don't mind looking the law up, I mean, I truly don't recall.
And I believe also, because it's a public meeting, they have, they have every right to be in here.
Let's very well research that part of it.
Believe last time.
I think you gave them the opportunity to, and it was, it was probably encouraged, but I don't think.
I think what we did too, like Lance and all that, we put them all up in the front conference room and we brought them back one at a time.
Right.
I remember doing that.
Check into that.
I think.
Did I, Darren? Didn't, weren't you part of that group? Or no? No, you weren't.
There wasn't, no.
Oh, you were already here, okay.
I think when they came up, like when we filmed, uh, when Wayne left, I think they came up one at a time. They were out, so.
I think that's what we gave each one of them the opportunity to speak without the others' hearing. But I think it was all still in an open meeting. I do think there's a, that, that we can't go into.
Find out for sure. I mean, we'll get the applications started.
I mean, this is one of these things that doesn't, and I, I truly can't remember, but, uh, we'll, we'll see.
Anyway. Yeah, we, we can do it. And I believe you all gave me, actually did ballots. You all gave me.
We did.
You wrote it down and then I read them all out loud and we made them available for the public.
No, we can't do that.
Yes, you can. You have to make them available for the public.
Well, I mean, they need to be seen. The, the, the general public needs to be able to know that Darren's voted this way, Josie's voted this way. I mean, that's, it, it can't be, uh, it can't.
Check that out.
I'm certain of that.
Yeah, check, check that out too.
Their votes, but.
We didn't, we just turned them in. We just ranked them and then handed them the bill.
Yes.
Well, if, if we did that, we shouldn't do it.
I think you can. Check it out.
Okay.
That's why I hired you for it. Anyway, we gotta process it. The next step is the applications and interviews, then we'll figure it out. Do you have something?
The interview process, is that gonna be here publicly?
Yes.
Yep.
On list.
Yes, for everybody to see, plus on YouTube. Yep, and these, and these folks will ask questions of the applicants.
And the applicants, they come up one at a time, but all the other applicants are in another room. So they can't hear what this applicant is saying.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, so, so we're, okay, we're putting the application out there and you all good with that? Y'all, they were, everybody who wants to apply can apply. Nobody's left out.
That's in that ward.
It's in ward, yeah, and I'll verify them all. And I'll, 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 first I'll have them verify all that. Make sure they live in the ward and they aren't registered. That, that's important. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll involve the clerk. So I did wanna say though, before you vote, Misty was gonna join us, but you know, she was also had something going on, so she said she would try. Well, no, she was still gonna just join us, just to maybe, you know, say farewell, but she got tied up, so, cause she did text me just prior to this meeting. And I gave her the Zoom code. So, but I just wanna say, you know, publicly, you know, Misty has served this council for many years. She's been on the council for twelve years. You know, we, actually, she was appointed in two thousand twelve. I did a little research, cause I thought she came in on fourteen, but she actually came in on two thousand twelve. And she served and re-elected, uh, you know, three different times. Done a great job for our council and she's gonna be missed and we appreciate her service. Well, I do, and I'm sure we all do too.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, she was, uh, seemed to work very hard for this, so.
Well, I think the, the motion can be, uh, to accept the resignation and to open the position.
Declare vacancy.
Declare vacancy.
Someone like to make that motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that, that application will be on the website, probably in the morning. You know, as soon as Nicola gets here, huh?
You're gonna cut off the application process on the first of April?
First of April.
So at the next council meeting is when the interview takes place?
And I will notify everybody.
It is the election on that day is.
Yes, it'll be sworn in at the end of that meeting. I'll swear them in right here.
Yeah.
At the end of the meeting. We'll put that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll put it toward the end, that where, you know, cause it might take a while and I don't wanna, if my staff wants to go home or something, I don't wanna hold them up. You know, we'll get through the, the business first and then we can, you know, then you can select someone and at the end I'll swear them in, it will be nothing. I, I can do that. As long as they come to a consensus. I mean, there won't be no tie, cause there's still five of them, so. And I can't even, I don't even think I can break a tie on that. You might check that too. I don't think I can. One, two, three, four. Oh, yeah, we're missing one, yeah, but he'll try.
There could be a tie.
You need to find out if I can break a tie.
If there's five applicants, there could be a tie.
Okay.
Say, it's a, or if there's ten.
Yeah, we have ten. Well, I think, I think you interview all ten of them. I mean, if you get ten here. You know, now, also I think one thing we need to put in the motion. Or we can, I just stated. Uh, this appointment, when you appoint someone, and we can state it again, that meeting is only until December of twenty twenty four. Her term's up in December of twenty twenty four. So if anybody is, whoever's appointed to the position, or any of the other applicants, uh, they can run for election, you know, this, this year.
They would need to if they wanna stay.
Yeah, they wanna stay, they have to run for election, yes.
So in November, they would have to.
Yeah, they had.
Ballot and, yes.
Yeah, they have to go through the petition process, probably in July, August. Um, you know, unless, unless, nobody runs and then they get to carry over.
Well, you would hope they'd want to, yeah.
Yeah, they show the interest they should, yeah. So, so I, I think we're good. Are we good, Brian? Hey, Brian, I cover everything?
I can say that again.
I covered it all?
I think you covered it all, yes. I'll do a little research. I think you've got the.
Let's get it, so we're solid, you know, we, we can announce at the beginning.
Sure.
So with that, would someone like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Misty Edel and declare a vacancy for ward one position?
I think we did.
Oh, you all did it?
Amy. Amy and Darren.
Then somebody asked a question. Alright, all in favor?
And then you're good.
Any one opposed? I don't get the vote, so. I'm opposed, cause I.
We kicked Misty off twice.
We did. She's definitely done now.
Yeah, we accepted it twice, yeah.
So with that, does, any of y'all have any other business? Yeah, Alan has some other business.
Okay.
Oh, you, did you buy, bought it, you wanted?
Thanks, Alan. It was good to talk to you.
No, no, he, hey, hey, no, you know, he told me this was possibly coming. I told him to have a chat first, but.
Yeah, this showed up, three minutes should be fine.
Three minutes.
Um, so this is at Bentonville West. They're doing an expansion on their bleachers. We have a minor, uh, site improvement probably going through for this. They're expanding the visitor side and then they're moving the band bleachers from on the home side over to the kind of diagonally, so you can kinda see them from the home side, you hear them better. They've kinda started work on this, but the problem falls on, Bill, if you can zoom into the right half of that picture.
That there?
That's left.
Over here?
Yes.
Zoom in some more?
And then scroll over maybe.
So you'll see ten little circles in kind of where the bleachers are gonna go. This set of bleachers is on concrete pedestals for a foundation. The problem falls is that.
There we go, how's that?
So do you want? Pillar. In the pond. Yeah, so I mean, we don't allow any kind of structures in the pond, period, or within twenty feet of the pond. Any waiver to it, the way it's written in their code is it's, you guys approve any waivers. So they haven't formally asked for one, but they kinda already started wanting to get going with this, cause they wanna be done sooner. Um, from an engineering standpoint, with like the water, when we look at the stormwater detention, all that, these pillars don't change a thing. There's no problem when it comes to that. Um, but it's a safety thing, like we don't allow structures in there for a reason. So I know there'll be, there'll need to be additional protection that the structural engineer provides, um, that I'm gonna ask for. But if they wanna proceed with where it's located with those in the back. Require it to be, no permanent structures in the pond has to be waived by the council, so.
So if we don't waive it?
Right.
Then they'll have to be twenty feet outside that and there's no exception. We will not approve it and they can't actually build.
They started?
They'd have to relocate.
Why didn't they look at ours first before they started?
They never really started.
I'm not sure how far, uh, it's what I was told, but.
Has someone advised them now of this then?
Uh, we just got this today.
Oh, jeez.
And because it has to go through you, I kind of pushed the issue without them even asking and knowing about this yet, rather than needing to wait a month.
Yes.
So I'm trying to do the school of favors by pushing it ahead, rather than like, oh, then we're gonna ask for a waiver. Wait a month, do all that, rather kind of jump the gun and talk to you guys now, right? The issue isn't like even kids falling off. Um, and it's not flowing water, so it's not gonna like erode these foundation bases. But it's gonna be stagnant water during storm events. As just the northernmost one, that's kinda just outside the dotted line. But it's at an elevation down there to where it is on even your five-year storm event, it's gonna have water next to the concrete. The next one up, it would only be touched by water on the fifty year and the other three will never be touched by water.
So if we gave them a water though, and something, or a waiver, and something happened, they couldn't come back on the city?
Structural engineer, he's the one who certified that it's gonna be fine no matter what. So it would all fall back to them, the developer, if they say it wasn't done right or anything else. The school should have to do inspections for rust, cause again, with water there, it should all be noted. But from the engineers, from the city standpoint, or so. Yeah, it's not something that I can grant a waiver on. There's some things in the, in the manual, I can, you know, waive some of these requirements or do a variance on, there's some of the requirements on it. The worry is, I mean, this isn't a precedent I wanna set by any means by having structures in it. But the same part, it's not so much a structure as a pillar.
Where's the stand, like, could a kid fall in the water?
No, I mean, it'll be some normal stadium bleachers. Um, so actually, I don't know if they have steel backing on the back of all the seats or not. Or if it's just literally the. So I mean, more so worried if people dropping things, I mean, it is the band. I don't know if they'll have their own, that's where the band will be, so I don't know if they'll have their own policy that, you know, if there's water in the pond, they're not gonna be there. Or, I mean, that'd be just a policy by them. It's not something that we can enforce. So. Wanna jump the gun, not make them wait a week, month. And see if this is something that you guys would waive or not. So it's more that safety thing, but.
Make comments now of what our thoughts are?
Yeah.
Because my thought is.
Let me just say, we don't wanna get in a situation where we're giving advisory opinions before it's in front of you.
My opinion is they're creating a hardship on themselves. It's not like the land creates the hardship. You're on yourself, oops.
Does it not have to go?
Not just redesign the, rebuild the detention area?
Yeah, so I mean, if they can do it, they can actually redesign this and have the twenty-foot separation. They'd have to fill it in. And then provide all the recalc's and redo the drainage mail to show that it still works, if they wanna fill it in and be fine.
Thanks for that, the school.
The school, the engineer they have, yeah, they'd have to redo that and recalc that for me, so. I'll answer your question, no. I, I double checked before I did it. I originally said, you know, they'd have to go to the planning commission to do this. But double checked real quick, the range manual goes right to you. If they request.
The structure though.
Yeah, it says no structures, permits are gonna be within twenty feet, so.
Yeah, we challenge them to go back and look for another solution. Look for another option where to put these bleachers, cause this is not our code.
Well, like you said, I'd hate to open up that box if we're getting.
Exactly.
An exception and then.
Yes, more exceptions follow.
Instead of precedent.
Exactly.
This is one lie, please, so I can get back to not.
What are other options that they have? Let's look.
Brian, do you think they need to make a motion on that?
I mean, the, the problem is, there's nothing that's under the council currently.
Okay.
So I mean, what we're doing is, eh, yeah.
I'm concerned, I didn't know.
Be in the in the flood zone if it was put behind the goalpost on the north side?
Unfortunately, I can't tell with the map right now, the way it's cut off, the dark black line that cuts through that, that would be the hundred-year water surface elevation. So everything above that is what's in that hundred-year elevation. And you can see it drops more than two feet from your far right side, your far left, four from the back.
I think there's houses being built just north of the station, so they would, I mean, uh, football field. So I think that they, those houses would be in the flood zone if.
Oh, it's not a flood zone, it's, this is the pond that the school built for detention, so they're releasing that lower rate of water, so it's not flooding downstream, so it's not a flood zone, it's just that water surface elevation caused by their own pond. So I mean, and again, the only time it fills up is when it rains, designed to drain over time. When it hits that peak during the five, that northernmost one will be in, and that second one down on the backside, won't even see water till the fifty year. And that's what I'm saying, when I look at it from, you know, the drainage portion of it, these pillars don't change a thing. They're not big, they're not enough impact, but it still does not meet our requirements, and that's where, you know.
Well, I think the direction.
See the argument for them both ways, but.
I think the direction, if you're looking for a direction from the council, sounds like the council is saying that we would back you and we would prefer it not to be there.
That's what I want to know.
Yeah. Rest of the council is saying, I think, I think that's what you can respond to them that.
No, I won't.
Like.
And this is why I wanted to try to push it and not have to wait them to come back a month or maybe for a special council meeting to ask these same questions, so.
They can.
They can, they can actually request this waiver if they want to. So, but that's why I just wanted to kind of.
If they want to pay for the meeting, that's their money.
Is it?
No, if they. It would come from the event.
Good boy, it's your money. All of our.
That's exactly right, yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
That one's money too, all right.
All right, thank you.
Any other business?
About three minutes?
Yes, that's three, that's three minutes.
And a half.
All right, the only thing I have is, I will have my monthly coffee with the mayor this Saturday, March sixteenth at nine AM. Now, if someone like to make motion to adjourn.
Main Street City Hall?
Yeah, two ninety North Main.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know if we were removing it.
No, no, the same place I was going.
Okay.
I call it the Center to Community.
Well, I just, just something that I learned yesterday, talking with my insurance agent. There are two major insurance companies that insure houses that have pulled out of the state of Arkansas. At the end of this month, if you are with them, you will no longer have insurance.
I, I had one of those, I lost it.
So you got a letter, is that how you found out about it?